So, welcome to the Lansville Community Center for the Gloucester School Committee Debate. My name is Valerie Nelson. I'm on the board of the community center and we're all so pleased to have you here, all of you, the candidates and the members of the audience. So, I'd just like to give you a little bit of direction for the evening. The moderator is Dick Proudy, and I'm a Lansville resident. And he'll be asking the three questions that you have on the piece of paper, the handout. They'll have five minutes each to answer those. And then some follow-up from Dick, followed by some additional questions from the moderator, one-minute response. Then we'll have some time for questions from the floor and some three one-minute closing statements. So, thank you very much again. And Dick, take over.
Thank you Valerie. So, we're just going to go from this end of the table to the other end of the table, and you have five minutes for the opening statement. And you've been given the questions in advance, but for your opening statement, but just for the audience, I will repeat them. How would you describe your overall philosophy of education? How would you describe the current conditions, strengths and weaknesses of our, all of our youth in our schools? That's the strengths and weaknesses and experiences of all of our youth. If you were successful in leading implementation of one bold initiative, as was the O'Malley Innovation Approach, what would that be? And where could you see the most dramatic room for improvement in the system?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ida Shaker. Thank you for having me this evening. My philosophy in education is somewhere between essentialism and progressivism. I believe that we have core competencies that we do need to teach students. And there does need to be a system of accountability, and the only way to do that, unfortunately, that we know of right now, that is the most effective, is through rigid instruction. However, I also believe that we should, that I understand that children learn best when they are active learners, and they take an active role in their learning. And involving them in decision-making and asking them, you know, really asking for their input and utilizing more of a democratic process with children helps them to, really, really well prepares them for adulthood, how to become members of society instead of learning how to take orders from people, which, you know, I feel like it really does expand higher-order thinking when you teach children in that method. In terms of the current conditions, strengths and weaknesses, and the experience of all of the youth in our schools, I think, I think it depends on what demographic of students you're talking about. I think the level of achievement really varies on the ability of a child and how well we're addressing the needs of that student. We do, as a district, we do a really great job at starting new initiatives and offering lots of different things to enrich education. However, we're not doing so well at addressing students with high needs. And that is proven through all of, I mean, we can see it in all of our test scores. The composite performance index consistently shows that those students are not doing very well at all. I think they're struggling a lot with social-emotional issues. And again, I think we just need to do a better job at addressing those underlying needs. And once we can do that, then we can build on that. In terms of a plan, I would really like to see a district-wide behavior management training, trauma training, the Trauma Learning Policy Initiative through the Massachusetts Advocates for Children is something that we really should seek, seek out. I've spoken with them. They do go out to districts and they will help us. They will help us implement district-wide trauma learning incentive program. And I also would really love to see full inclusion. And I know that this doesn't always work out well. And unfortunately, the problem with that is because it's often not implemented properly. But full inclusion really does help raise all student scores. The data is, when implemented properly, full inclusion really does very well for our students. Secondly, it's the law. We really should be doing this. Boston has a pilot program that they've been working on, and it had some bumps in the beginning, mainly because of behavior, but test scores improved significantly. The Federation for Children with Special Needs has this data. They go into districts, they help raise those scores. They help us with behavior issues. They, you know, they train us on how to do it properly. Also, there's less absenteeism, which is a problem that we have, a chronic problem that we have in the district right now. And I think that's another way to tackle the problem. And it also instills respect and diversity amongst peers and staff. The projection of how many students are going to have, how many people in general are going to be identified with special needs is continuously growing. And in society, we can't cast them out. They're part of us, and we need to include them in every day, and we need to see them every day, and we need to learn how to communicate effectively with all different types of people. And full inclusion, I believe, would promote that. It would take some money to do so, and I hope that the funding that we get from Student Opportunity Act or anything else that comes through can be directed in that area. And I also believe that we can actually cut, save some money from the costs that we're, the funds that we're using to run parallel programs, which is, you know, currently what we have. But more inclusion would be ideal. Thank you very much.
Could I just suggest perhaps we take 20 seconds each at the beginning of your statement, and you can now do this, to introduce yourself a little personally in what you do to the audience, your background.
Yes.
And I'll say one other thing, too. I'd like to introduce the timekeeper, so he hasn't stopped last year, and we haven't, you know.
You still have more time. You can go on.
Yeah.
So, I went to school.
Okay, now you're done.
All right. So, I went to school for early childhood education and psychology. I currently work as an advocate for children's needs. I am also working with the Federation for Children's Needs to, as a parent consultant. So, it's like an education advocate. And I'm working with the Massachusetts Families Organizing for Change, hoping to start some policy initiatives to really beef up the laws in the state to help our students with needs, because they're our most vulnerable population right now. And I'm my mom.
Thank you.
Jonathan.
Twenty seconds, twenty seconds to explain who I am. My name's Jonathan Pope.
I'll cut you off at 20 seconds.
Okay. I'm, I'm currently on the school committee. I've been on the school committee for, I'm finishing up my 18th year. I grew up in Gloucester. I ran a business in Gloucester for the, most of the time. Pope Cabinets. I was a woodworker. I'm still a woodworker. And I, both of my sons went through the school systems, and they both have graduated and have gone on to, you know, be, have successful careers in their chosen fields. My wife, Susan, was the sped coordinator at Veterans School. And we had met while we were both teaching in Middleton at a 766 school called the Wreath School, which was for emotionally disturbed adolescents back in the late 70s and early 80s. My mother was a school teacher. She taught at Lane School and Plum Cove. She opened up Plum Cove. She retired in her 70s. So, that's pretty much who I am. Philosophy on education. I think the important thing that we need to do in education today is meet children where they are and recognize their skills and their, their abilities and develop those. Every kid has talent. Every kid has, has, has something that, that sets them afire. And that's what we, as educators, need to find, because the, the core, you know, we need, they need to learn to read and write and add and subtract. I'm not saying that. But, but usually by the third or fourth grade, we've pretty much got that, that stuff down. And after that, what you need to do is find the thing, whether it's music, or art, or math, or robotics, or, and they need to feel that they belong in the schools. Kids need to feel like they're part of what's going on, and that they are accepted for what they are. And there's a lot of talk about emotional and social skills, and we spend a lot of our resources on trying to develop and support those sort of issues with, with learning. Because today, I mean, a kid's not going to learn anything if they're coming in and worrying if they're going to eat tonight. Or they're not going to learn anything if they're, if they're worried that when their little brother's home, they're going to have to watch them, and they're in the third grade. And that stuff happens. That stuff is, is, is real. And the stress that kids are under today is substantial. And we, as educators, as a school system, has got to be aware of all of the different places that, that kids are coming from, and meet them where they are, and try to teach them from that point on. The, you know, and as I said, we need to find the thing that, that sets them afire. That's the important thing. The, over the past, I'll move on to number two here. Over the past, and this is going back into the early 2000s, we really set up a situation where we said, what we need to do is put our resources into the elementary schools and get the kids and get them up to speed, instead of trying to catch up when they get into the middle school or the high school. And that's, that's, we were one of the first districts in the state to implement full-day kindergarten, and that was back in 2002. And we, we put, we'd been putting our resources into the elementary schools, and the elementary schools are doing very well. And some of them are very challenged with, with the populations that they have. And when I say that, it means they're challenged to score good grades on the, on the, on the tests that the state requires, and which everybody looks at and says, whether you were doing good or bad, which I don't put a lot of stock in. But, so we've done that, and, and it's been successful. But in, in the course of doing that, I think we, we have let some...
My name is Samantha Virga-Watson. I'm a lifelong, most of my life, that's been spent living in Gloucester. I'm a parent of two young daughters. I have a four-year-old and a 20-month-old. My husband and I live in the Magnolia neighborhood. My husband grew up in Gloucester as well. Both of us were educated in Gloucester Public Schools, and I'm a licensed social worker. Most of my experience as a social worker has been working directly in this community. First, as a social worker for pathways for children, working for the after-school program and for the teen parent program. And then later, as an in-home family therapist at Children's Friend and Family. So, I did in-home family work with high-risk youth and their families. So, I would do about two- to three-hour sessions right in the home, in Gloucester and Rockport. So, that's sort of my overall experience. Now, I work per diem as a medical social worker at Beverly Hospital. So, my overall philosophy on education really stems from the work that I've done. Unfortunately, the work that I've done has highlighted some of the real needs that we have in this community. And I think we need to have a whole-child approach to education, one that recognizes behavior as a form of communication. And it's something that I've seen lacking in not just this community, but in all communities working in schools, that oftentimes, and I don't mean to pick on teachers, but there's sort of this approach where you see a behavior and you can take it personally. It's just natural, right? It's just natural to sort of take something personally, think that you're doing something wrong. But what we're missing is that behavior is often stemmed from something bigger, something that's going on really outside of the school that has absolutely nothing to do with what's going on in the classroom. And so, I think we just have to have a better approach on sort of understanding, similarly to what everybody else has said, to what's going on with kids' social-emotional needs. The current conditions, I think we've made a lot of strides. I do feel, though, that there's not a lot of equity, particularly in the elementary schools. If you look at what's going on at West Parish and what's going on at some other schools, I definitely think there's some opportunity gaps in what kids are, what they have access to. There are some kids who are getting art in a cart, that don't have music rooms, don't have a full gymnasium, a full library. I grew up going to Fuller School. We had literally everything. And so, I think that that's a problem. I think that we don't have parity across the board in our education system throughout the elementary schools. And I would like to see that change. And if I were successful in leading in the implementation of one bold initiative, it would be that we, the entire district is, is trauma-informed and trauma-sensitive. Veterans is a trauma-sensitive school. It's showing some progress in decreasing absenteeism, decreasing restraints, decreasing suspensions. And I think we really do need to have an overall district approach, so that teachers feel empowered to recognize behaviors as what they are, as a form of communication. And I think overall, kids are going to feel safer coming to school. They're going to feel more understood. And we're going to build teacher resiliency just by giving them the skills that they need. I'm not asking for teachers to be social workers, but I do think that teachers need the right skills to deal with today's behaviors. Thank you.
We've got about one and a half minutes left.
Quarter time?
Yeah.
Why don't you give that to Jonathan?
I will donate it.
What, I forgot where I was. Oh, the, well, I just, I just wanted to say that what we need to do, where we're weak is at this point, is the high school and the middle school. We've kind of, we need to put more resources into both facilities. As far, as far as a bold initiative, I'm, I'm more of the school that you make incremental improvements on what you have. The, you have to understand that we're a large organization. We have 600 employees. And sometimes bold initiatives are, are not as effective as incremental initiatives. And I, there are many that we need to keep working on and keep progressing and making progress. I mean, if we could, I remember, to Ida's point, when, when, when I started, and there were, I think, almost 14 self-contained classes. And, and early on, we moved to inclusion.
There you go.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Clancy. I'm delighted to be here tonight. I know you historically have hosted an event for the candidates, and it's really appreciated that people pay attention to the education in Gloucester. My background is in finance, and I did corporate and, corporate finance and operational management. Did that for over 20 years. I did not grow up here, but I've been here for 25 years. I live over in East Gloucester. I have a son who is 15, and he's a sophomore at Gloucester High School. And he has had an amazing experience through Gloucester School so far, which I'm very proud of, and, and happy to have my child go to school with the kids that he, that he lives with and in the community that he's in. So, in terms of my passion for education, it has to do a lot with my involvement with the Gloucester Education Foundation, which, trying to find that, that program, that subject, that experience that excites kids. Our district mission statement is for all students to be successful and lifelong learners, successful, engaged lifelong learners. And I think that means different things to different kids. And so, the more we can provide a breadth of opportunity, as well as the depth of the foundational knowledge they have, I think everybody will be inspired, hopefully, to, you know, come to school the next day because they're looking forward to, you know, their photography class, or the after-school program they do. And some kids need just one hook to get them to like learning in general. So, that's my dream, is that we create an environment where every child has an opportunity to feel successful. That could be in the cabinet-making class. It can be in their drama program, performance. It could be because they're really great in math, and being, you know, being cool in math is very, it's very cool these days to be good in math. So, you know, we have great athletics. So, there's many opportunities, I think, that kids can find where they are successful, and hopefully get a passion for continuing their education as they, as they go through life. I think the strengths in our schools, currently, we've made a lot of progress, as Jonathan said, in our elementary schools. We really have done a lot of investment in literacy and math. Our next frontier is this new science program that we have. And I think that's an area where we have been weak, where kids haven't necessarily had a real science curriculum. Science is more embedded in literacy. Now, we have this new curriculum, so they will definitely have hands-on experience. And the teachers are doing professional development and really getting to know that curriculum. So, we have amazing opportunities in science, technology, engineering, and math at the middle school. We have four labs there. If you haven't toured the, the middle school in a long time, I highly encourage you to visit the middle school, because the kids are making carts that sail around the track, and they're doing aquaponics and, you know, and having things grow, because fish are there. So, I think that's an area where we do a lot of really strong things, both at the middle and the high school. I think our arts are robust, but I do think we can still do more. I know their kids interested in string instruction and performing in those areas. So, that's an area where, you know, a little more, I think, would provide more opportunities for our kids. Another weakness is the condition of our buildings. And I think that goes without saying that our buildings are all, all the elementary schools are 60, 70 years old. So, if I were to do one bold thing, I think the groundwork is being laid at the high school right now for more inquiry-based and, and critical thinking skills for our students. Our kids have to be prepared, not just with the foundational knowledge, but with, with the skills to be able to adapt, right? I mean, years ago, everybody went into one profession, and they stayed in that profession for a very long time. And now, I think people need to kind of do this through their career, and not necessarily just that. So, that, the skills of problem-solving, the skills of being more analytical, as opposed to, you know, memorizing. Kids don't memorize, need to memorize as much anymore. And they need to be able to figure out what that knowledge is and what to do with that knowledge. So, I think we need to start with more computer science early on. I think it gives some of those problem-solving skills. I think it's going to be one of those foundational skills and pieces of knowledge every kid needs to have. It's just the world they're, they're going to be employed in. So, you know, between that and some more project-based learning, where you really combine a lot of subjects and have all the kids working in teams, building on the strengths of each other, and creating things, is, is, is just an area that I think we can go, you know, expand tremendously. And our kids would benefit throughout their entire lives.
Time.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Excellent.
Wow.
All right. I'm going to set my own timer also, because Joel gave me the idea. So, my name is Laura Weason. I'm running for school committee as a parent and as a citizen who believes deeply in public schools. Our family moved to Gloucester nine years ago. We have two children, one who's at the Beeman Memorial School, and the other who's in her last year of preschool. Before moving to Gloucester, I was a TV news and documentary producer for over two decades. So, I have all that experience of being a writer, a researcher, and a team leader who managed budgets and had a deliverable, which would be a television show, on time and at budget. So, in thinking about my educational philosophy, I believe in several main tenets, and there's more. Using the differentiated learning model to meet children where they are, as Jonathan said, and the schools are doing that quite well at the elementary level. Offering more challenging and creative learning opportunities to teach students to process information and think critically. And in the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Commissioners Report, he talked about how affluent districts have a lot of that, and less affluent districts don't. And I think we need more of that here. I'm a big proponent of experiential learning. Children learn in different ways. I think everyone learns by going outside and doing things with their hands, whether or not that's their, that, that's their gift. Here, we have this giant classroom called the Ocean, which is just such an enormous gift, and we could use that even more. And I believe in the value of diversity in our schools. I think that's, I think that's a positive that we have here in our Gloucester schools. As a school committee member, I will be doing a lot of listening, though, to our educators, and what they are saying is working and not working in our schools. I want to hear about their, their educational philosophies as well, because I really believe that education is a team sport. So, it's all of us in this together. One of the questions was about an educational innovation that I'd like to bring to our schools. As a researcher, I researched this. And I think everything I know about being a parent in the school and speaking to parents and families in the schools, is that we would benefit by bringing our families more deeply into our schools. I feel like there's a, there's a lot of information blockages. And the Secondary Education Commissioner introduced a parent, a program called Parent-Teacher Home Visits, that brings teachers into homes and deepens connections between schools and families. So, this model's been used for 20 years, and it's reached 700 communities in 25 states. And it's a model where teachers are trained to go home, to go into the student's home, and learn about the family, interact with the family, once or twice a year. And the results have been quite impressive. If, if 10% of families in a district participate, absenteeism goes down and scores go up for the school in general. So, it's, it's had some very positive interactions, and it creates a, you know, it seems to me to be the kind of thing we need to sort of build a lot of, of communication and interaction with families who may not, you know, either new families to Gloucester, new families to this country, people who are struggling day-to-day, who, you know, are having trouble sort of supporting their kids in schools. I think that could be a really great advantage for our community. In addition to deepening relationships through home visits, I believe strongly, and everyone here has heard me talk about, that we need to improve the communication in general between our, our school system and our families and the greater community. And so, you know, in order to have information flowing in a way that people can understand what's happening in our schools, both parents and caregivers, and the community at large. And I believe that part of that is making the school committee more accessible to everyone. And I would start right off the bat by having school committee meetings in schools, and starting to make it, you know, open up, open the gates, so that people can participate and share their experiences. As far as how the schools are doing, I agree with my colleagues or possible colleagues. The elementary schools are doing well. There's a lot of work to be done, I think, in the middle and high school. And, and as Ida said, I think it also depends on who we're talking about, whose experience we're talking about. There's a lot of different experiences happening in our schools. But there's great STEM learning, there are caring teachers, and there's wonderful school communities. And our buildings at the elementary level are an issue that we are dealing with and need to deal with. So, I, that's my main thing. I have a proven track record as a team player and someone who listens and observes and acts to solve problems. And I'm number six on the ballot.
There you go.
Good evening. Thank you all for taking the time to come here tonight. My name is Joel Favazza. I am a product of the Gloucester Public School System. I'm now a real estate attorney. I have a firm down on Main Street here in Gloucester. I'm married to a middle school teacher in a different district. I am the guardian to a GHS graduate of the class of 2017. Well, she's an adult now, I'm only her guardian. And I'm also the guardian to a GHS graduate who's graduating this spring in 2020. I'm also the father of three small children. So, for timeline purposes, I graduated GHS in 2003. Gracie started in the Gloucester Schools in 2007. She's graduating this spring. My son, Giuseppe, will start in kindergarten this fall. So, I'm about to start my third lap through the system, the first one being as a student, the second two being in a parental role. My overall philosophy for education, I think, was founded when I was a young student in the Gloucester system, and has been solidified watching next generations go through. And that's that children learn differently and need to be able to have different avenues through which they can express their intelligence. Along with Sam, I was at the Fuller Elementary School and in the 90s. And aside from having like every... And aside from having like every possible resource you would want at your fingertips, there was also a program called the Multiple Intelligence Program. And so I was in mixed grade classrooms. You were encouraged to attack projects based on your, your strengths and your preferences while also trying to work in things that you would need some help bringing up. And so, for instance, right now, we do a lot of project-based learning, which is great. But if every student has to do the same project, you're really not hitting, you know, this concept that children learn differently, you're just making them all learn in the same different way, right? As far as the, the weaknesses, strengths in our school, I think one of the strengths we have is the variety in our school. And one of the weaknesses we have are variables we can't seem to control in our school. And so for variety of good things, like the amount of AP courses at the high school, the extracurricular clubs at O'Malley, the budget clubs at the elementary schools also. I think we have a diverse population. I agree that's a strength for our district. We look like the rest of the country. We don't look like an isolated, you know, microcosm. But there are these variables. What elementary school you attend has an impact on your likelihood for success in that elementary education. That's a variable that we should be somehow accounting for. What socioeconomic background you come from has a big impact on your likelihood for success in our district. And that's a variable that we need to learn how to account for to make sure that these students are all receiving the same opportunities and are still being brought up to a level playing field despite these variables. As far as large initiatives, I have three that I like. One is free. One is later start times at the high school in O'Malley. You can read piles of scientific study that say absenteeism goes down, academic performance goes down, social, emotional, behavioral issues go down, car accidents go down, right? This is, and it's, it's all free. You just shift to the later in, in the day, right? So it's a huge one. Another one that is not free, but if you were able to get the results you're looking for, might be something to look into, that would be longer school days. We just eke by on the required time on learning each year. Our school days are short compared to other districts in the state and in the region. And I would like to have them made longer. I think that would enable us to attack some of our academic goals that we're struggling to, to hit. And then my, everyone here is probably sick of hearing me talk about it, but the regionalization with Rockport. I think the student population on this island does not support two wholly separate school districts anymore. I think the pooling of resources and talent could actually result in a better district than either have right now. And so I want to work strongly to have that conversation. I guess the other strength/weakness dichotomy I'm really interested in is that our strength is that we're not the district we were 15 years ago, but our weakness is that we can't get out from under the reputation of our district 15 years ago. O'Malley is no longer about surviving, right? O'Malley is about thriving, but we don't really hear about that. Accountability scores came out for the elementary schools. Four of our five did better than Rockport. Some did more than twice better than Rockport, but have you heard about that, right? So like, that's the kind of stuff, you know, we're not the district we were, but no one seems to know. And so I'd like to continue to try and work on getting the word out about the good things we are accomplishing. So again, I'm Joel.
Okay, well, thank you so much for those statements. As I was listening to you, I learned a lot. And so I'd like to just have each of you take 30 seconds to a minute, since we have some extra time. Since Mozzatek Terrace is not here, we have some extra time on the agenda and I didn't learn that till 15 minutes ago. So take 30 minutes, 30 seconds to a minute to comment, not on you, what you've said or your ideas, but on what you've learned and heard from the other five members of the panel and what you think you would like to follow up with them, if anything. You want to go first?
I'm so excited to hear Laura say, she wants to have school committee meetings at schools. I tried a couple of years ago to change our location, it was like voted down 6-1. Right now, we have our meetings at a, at a building in an industrial park that has no pedestrian access. And that's like, that's bonkers, right? It's a very unfriendly feeling situation. And so I'm super excited that she wants to have committee meetings at schools or the public buildings where people can get to, where they feel familiar with, you know? So I think it's great.
Thank you. I have something. I wanted to learn more about the new science curriculum, which I don't know very much about, so.
And I guess we're probably more in agreement than disagreement because we all care about our, all those kids in this town. But I completely agree that the communication in terms of what's going on in our schools is woefully inadequate. It's not enough. I think sometimes we try to get the message out and how many people are listening. We need to kind of just keep getting it out. We try to get our schools to put stuff in the newspaper and the newspaper covers when we ask them to, but I think...
Time.
Okay?
Have you gone 30 seconds or the one?
30 seconds.
Okay. 15 more.
Anyway, I just, I, I agree. We, you know, we're going to talk about kind of updating our website and just make it more user-friendly and, and just really do a better job of, of engaging families and, and the whole community because it's all of you who hopefully will vote for a new school because you value education and we need to make you feel good about those kinds of things that we're dealing with.
I'll just piggyback on that. And I know people have heard me say this over and over again, but as you look in the audience, there's not usually a lot of parents in the room. And so I think, you know, if elected, I really would like to make it a goal to get the information out there as much as possible to the people who are impacted by the decisions that we're going to be making, if elected. And so I think, you know, to start, it would be helpful to have a much bigger social media presence. I think having these debates livestreamed is a really good start. I know a lot of young parents are really excited that they can watch after bedtime, you know? They don't have to navigate childcare to get to a debate. And that's a reality. And people are navigating childcare to try to come to these meetings and to some of the meetings about the school building projects. The people that we're hearing from are people whose kids are not going to be in the, in the system. So I think it's important that parents' voices are being heard as well.
I think that communications can always be improved and I think that there's many things we can do. And I look forward to the school committee in the future working, working more diligently on that aspect. I, I would like to just go back to the, this total, the total inclusion thing because I, I find it very interesting because we, we, it's, it's a, it's a very good ideal. And I, I understand the value of it. And I think that we, and I, I just wanted to say that I think we are moving in that direction. It's just not as fast as it, you know, it might be.
Two things. I love what Joel said about later in times and later out times and possibly extending the day too, because the most vulnerable hours for students is, sorry, the most vulnerable time for students is actually in the afternoon because parents aren't home yet and they're left unattended. Plus, and all of the other reasons that Joel brought up. And I also like the community involvement, parent involvement. I'm actually the co-chair for our Special Education Parent Advisory Council and part of what we're doing is trying to pull in families and try to help them more, take an active role in their children's education. Thank you.
So I'll just weigh in. I, I am fairly surprised at what you said about the four, the elementary schools versus the Rockport elementary schools, like not just surprised, shocked. So what, everybody take, just quickly, everybody have one idea to, how would we get that idea out there? Because I think that's an important thing in terms of reputation and the brand of our school system versus choice and people going to other systems. How many, what percent of Rockport is from Gloucester? Third, yeah. So what, just one quick idea, it can be one sentence or a phrase. What would you do to get that idea out there?
Oh, I think you, you publish the K-Band scores in the newspaper and people, you know, in numerical order. You know, you only do a press release saying, hey, we beat Rockport, look at us, and blow some balloons, but you just, you know, publish the scores. Say, hey, in this, in this accountability index, here's how the K-Band schools did.
I mean, I've been doing this. You talk to preschool parents, that's the world I'm coming from. And you talk to preschool teachers and you speak, and you get the information into the paper, onto social media, onto much better websites where a parent could go and actually say like, oh, what happens to, to a kid at Gloucester Elementary School? Here's a day. I mean, there's all kinds of ways that, I mean, there are so many, people are doing so many things, but the website is abysmal. So if someone wanted to come and learn about our system, I'm sorry, but it's true. And so if someone wanted to come and say like, oh, what could, let's think, let's think if I want to go to Gloucester schools. They go click on, you can't find anything. And it's not inviting and it's not welcoming and it doesn't express what happens to your children for a day at school. Parents can do that. I speak to other parents about that.
Yeah, you've exceeded your one sentence.
Okay. This is my thing, so.
So my first idea is that we need to tell the parents within our community, within our schools, because that has not been communicated out. Because if I were a parent at East Gloucester and, you know, I'm in the 72nd percentile in the state, that's really cool information to, to boost up your pride in your school. So not all our schools are doing as well as others. We do have pockets where there are a lot of high needs, but we're very transparent about it. So I think we should be transparent about it all and celebrate that particular success because it's taken a lot of investment and time and hard work by our teachers.
So I would agree with Laura that we sort of have to talk to parents before they enter the system because I, the people that I know who are going to the schools are, are happy with their experience. It's the people who are making the decision before kindergarten that I think we really need to access.
You know, I, I think that making it clear about our successes is important, but I think the thing that would make a big difference is if we were, did a better job of celebrating diversity. Because I think, and this is, I believe that diversity scares some people and they head to Rockport.
Yeah, and the research on that is, because I think that's an important part of celebrating it, is understanding the research on what diversity brings.
Exactly. Am I one sentence? We need to know why they're going, really, before we can do that. It's not all about test scores. And we need to do exit interviews, we need to send out parent, you know, questionnaires. We need to know why because unless we know why, we cannot address that reason. Even though the test scores are there, you can access them. It's a little tricky when you go to the website, but it's not all about test scores. So we need to know why.
Great. So we're back on schedule. Thank you for those, indulging me with those questions. And so I've got three questions that, they're a little open-ended, but I hope you can, can go with it. And we'll, we'll go one minute each on these. And we'll just start in a different place. So I'll go with Kathy Clancy, go out to Joel, and then around. And the first question is vaping is a pretty hot topic now. We know Governor Baker's made his ruling. We know that there were reports about the increase of vaping in young people. I heard just on the radio of BUR Tonight Driving that 25% plus of all students in schools are vaping. So given that research shows that the biggest lever on student behavior is the opinion of your peer group, what are your thoughts on how to address vaping as it exists in the Gloucester schools? And you can maybe tie that a little bit to your philosophy.
So I, it is a huge problem to tackle because I think if your peer group is supposed to be the ones influencing you, that's not working. Because we have kids saying, give us back our bathrooms. We have kids saying, we don't think it's cool that our friends are doing it. It's really not making much of a difference. I think it's the, it's the thing that kids are trying. And I think like smoking, you have to really do a campaign about how unhealthy it is and have that be just much more understood. And I think it came so fast that I, I'm not sure the education and the reality of the danger of it is really understood even by adults sometimes. So we are expecting kids to understand the danger that adults probably don't necessarily have all the information with which to provide, like smoking. So we, you know, we try to, we look to, looking at vaping detectors for the bathrooms at the high school to hopefully deter.
Oh, okay. So as Kathy said, I've also heard from high school students who want, who want their bathrooms back, which is really a shame. And I think, you know, like in anything, I think in high school or in middle school, you want to do what you think is cool. I think it's hard to get at that. One thing I know has already happened, excuse me, are educational, educational sessions for parents to identify those, you know, they look like little USB things, you know, they look like little thumb drives. And I wouldn't recognize that. I don't need to yet, but I'm sure that parents, you know, this happens so quickly. So I think educating parents, first of all, to identify what the paraphernalia looks like and teachers and administrators, obviously, but I suspect they're more, they're more on top of that. And then, you know, starting some sort of possibly a school-based campaign of, you know, you know, if something looks cool, it's hard to get kids to stop doing it. If it, you know, but if your peers, if your peers, you know, if it starts to not look cool, it's not cool.
Yes, I agree that there's obviously a subset of students that, you know, attribute some cool factor to vaping. I don't think it's the majority and I don't think it's even a large minority. Certainly, you know, for every student who looks at some vaping and is like, oh, I want to do that, there's several more students who are like, oh my goodness, please don't do that here. And so I think that as we get better about prevention and detection and that behavior gets pushed outside, those were the GHS, remember, Smokers Hill, which was like across the street. And that was a very ostracized, uncool place. The kids went to Smokers Hill, were not impressing anybody. They're a satisfying niche, unfortunately. And so I think as detection gets better, prevention gets better, there'll be this, you know, silver lining to ostracizing some children for some behavior, where they'll be over at Smokers Hill vaping and that, you know, if we're trying to adjust the cool factor, getting them sequestered over there is going to go a long way.
Much of what Joel said about prevention, education. Smoking's a funny thing because a lot of people experience cognitive dissonance. So once your body's kind of addicted to it, you, you know, you either tell yourself that, you know, well, it's really not that bad, or it's bad, but I don't care, or, you know, it'll never affect me. I think really exposing them to more knowledge about what it does to your body, so like a school-wide campaign, that would be helpful. But also, I think in terms of the peer part, I think we need to do a better job at teaching children how to develop a, a strong sense of self. Because when you have a strong core and you, you know, you love yourself from within, you don't follow the crowd. You do what you know and your heart is right. And I, I think that we really need to focus on types of programs that kind of pull that out. I know that meditation and yoga is kind of working in some of the elementary schools and the middle school as well, I believe. And I think, did they say that high school is also working on it as well? I think that's a great place to start.
Time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, most of this has been said. Prevention and detection is, is necessary. I'm not sure that that's going to change the, the cool factor of it, but it will isolate the, the students, as Joel said, who are obsessed with vaping. I'm, I'm very disappointed in, in the, you know, the, the company, the, the lack of oversight by the government to let, you know, these flavored, you know, bubblegum-flavored nicotine vapors be sold to, clearly marketed to kids. And it just seems to have happened. Nicotine's highly addictive. And yet, these, all these products hit the market, which I am very disappointed about. But once kids, as, as I just said, once, once you're addicted to nicotine, you stop making excuses.
So I think people have covered quite a bit of how big of a problem this is, but I will say that the high school has recently adopted something called the PACE program, which is alternative to suspensions. And so I think we need to look at also how, how we're sort of disciplining students for these behaviors, right? So if you send a kid home for substance use, what do you think they're going to do at home? Likely use a substance, right? So it's not really effective. So what the high school is doing is creating a program within the school as an alternative to sending kids home. And, and so it's, it's a much more supportive way to address behaviors, particularly around addiction, I think. We need to look at it as, as an addiction, right? So we need to sort of talk, be able to talk to, have the kids be able to talk to social workers. I will say that there-
I will say that there is only one social worker at the high school, which is a problem. So adding vaping to, um, her, her caseload is probably a little overwhelming, but, um, thanks.
So, um, this next topic is, uh, something I've been spending a lot of time on, just as a full disclosure, but, um, there's growing agreement that we need to have the schools address climate, the climate crisis in a variety of ways. And so what do you, um, what are your thoughts and recommendations for the Gloucester schools to address the climate crisis, climate change issues within the school system? And let's start with Laura.
Well, the climate change issue, most, I mean, it depends on if you're talking about, you know, the broadest, obviously the building in most dangers, the high school. So is that the kind of?
No, I just, I, I left it open-ended, so you can look at, you could look at it at the facility level, you could look at it at an educational level, a variety of things, and you've got a minute, so we'll start the minute now.
Okay. So the high school is the building that's most vulnerable immediately to the, to rising sea level, and there is work being done to build a flood barrier from the bridge up, and they're working on different, um, drains and sewer things to account for the next major storm. So that's that. I think, um, I think, I know as a Beeman parent that our children are being, um, educated about the earth and about how things are changing and how we, how we, uh, what we do on the planet impacts the climate and the changing of the earth. They're not hearing about it apocalyptically at this point, um, but they are learning. I think we, as a school system, um, can do a better job of sort of take their learning to the next level. Um, you know, we, we have compostable trays in our, in our cafeterias, but they're thrown in the trash. Um, we have, you know, we, we're sort of working towards sustainability. We teach sustainability. We don't always do it, uh, in our schools. And...
Time.
So, as far as the education, I think students are receiving proper education on the realities of climate science. I think that unfortunately, the people in charge of the district and the city have not received that education. We just spent three and a half million dollars rebuilding a stadium below sea level, and we're shocked when the ocean came and wiped it out, wrecked the new stands, right? Shocked, right? So that, so I think the education needs to be for people in charge, not the people, the kids in the school. When we go through and replace these older buildings with newer buildings, we're helping to lower the city's carbon footprint by having energy-efficient buildings. And then, right, as far as, you know, making sure compostable trays are being composted, or as we explore new school solutions, whether or not there's actually reusable work, does, you know, the extra electricity and water cost of dishwashers, um, you know, outweigh the cost of, to, to, the cost to society in general of disposable trays. We're washing our own trays rather than throwing away our composting trays every day. Is there a net benefit, you know, from that perspective also?
I'd like to mention what everybody else said, because they're all great ideas and definitely important points. One of the things that I'm pretty sure accurate statement here is that, uh, the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions is actually meat, commercial meat, pro- commercial meat. I'm not advocating that everybody becomes a vegetarian, it is a personal choice, but I think, uh, teaching children about, uh, nutrition, where their food comes from, try to locally source, is huge. Um, the backyard growers do a great, great job, um, especially at the elementary level. My daughter absolutely loves all of them there. But learning to locally source your food, teaching them to, you know, choose to have meatless Mondays. Little things that you can do, uh, can implement, implement big change when a lot of us do it. Uh, and the other thing is updating all of the, the school buildings so that they are , why? LEED certified, which I know that the, the new plan, um, does involve that, so green schools, so implementing things like that, and, and teaching them about the process as you do it. You know, have them see it, you know, pictures, show them like why it's important, and then compare it to. Thank you.
Yeah, West Parish, West Parish is a gold LEED certified building. It, uh, and some of the, the buildings that, um, the existing buildings that we have that were built in the 50s and, and 40s are, are, you know, just remember, oil was 17 cents a gallon, and that's what they had in mind when they built them. And it's, 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 there's a lot of work to be done on, on the buildings. As far as, um, education goes, um, to some extent, I think, I agree with Joel, that the kids are much better, much more aware than we are, than the older people. I mean, we, you know, it's very difficult to push things through, um, you know, because it's all about money. And, and when we, when we tried to get, you know, we got compostable trays, but as I said, they're going in the trash. You know, they're going in the dumpster and they're going in the landfill. So we're not really where we need to be on this stuff. And, uh, but the kids are great.
Time.
Um, not to, you know, beat the composting thing to death, but I know West Parish had tried to implement composting last year, um, and they, they had to stop. And so there are parents and student interest and teacher interests in, um, in creating sort of programs that, um, that we're teaching our kids in our homes. You know, I had a parent reach out to me and say, I compost at home and my kids are wondering why we're throwing food in the trash. In addition to that, our school lunch times are very short, and so there's a lot of food waste. And so I think we really need to sort of think about that. I was invited to come and watch how chaotic a school lunch can be and how, you know, if you're last in line, you kind of have to shove food down your throat and, um, throw it away if you don't, if you don't have enough time. So I think there's a lot of waste happening, and so I think we need to look at that as sort of as a big picture in our overall schedule, so that that's not happening.
I think everybody's pretty much said a lot. I, I know we do a lot of education. We have seaside sustainability come in and do programs with our kids through some enrichment. Um, I think all we can do is just continue to keep educating, and kids are the best educators, I think, of their parents on some of these more current issues. A high school is very active about, um, climate change. There, there's been projects done, um, trying to show where the sea level may be in 20 to 30 years. But I still think, you know, we can always go deeper in something that's a very complicated and, and real reality coming up, so.
Before I go to the third question, um, because we've got plenty of time, we're at eight o'clock. So, um, I'm just curious, I really don't know the answer to this question, and I, it varies from district to district and it varies from institution to institution. And that's, what are the rules sort of, or the norms, shall we say, to use a word that's in vogue now when talking about governance? Broken norms or norms not followed at the highest levels? What are the norms when you've got a good idea, and we've thought, heard lots of good ideas here? How does that get translated to the superintendent and his team and go into the system? How does the exchange work? And, um, I'm ju- I really, uh, sort of would like to hear how it does work, and then maybe how you think it could work or should work. Some of you have studied this, I'm sure, in many other locations. Why don't we start with Kathy?
I can start. So at the end of our meetings, we have a section called New Business, and I think when we have ideas, that's where we bring it up. If it's something that is, um, falls under the superintendent, he, we may have him go off and come back with a report. If it's something we need to discuss further at the committee, we make a referral out to subcommittees for that idea to be, to be explored. So I, I guess it just depends on the nature of the suggestion, like, you know, I said we really need to change the website, so we referred it to the program subcommittee to start talking about what does that look like? And then it'll go to the building and finance so that we figure out how to pay for it. So it's different, depends what exactly the recommendation or the idea might be.
Is, is a vote taken and is the superintendent instructed to follow and create a new website? I just want to go in order here, yeah? Go ahead, Kathy.
So when we, when we do a referral, it really is, if, if there's enough support, it goes out. It's not necessarily a vote, but, you know, it's kind of like, without rejection, we'd like to push this on.
Right, so I'm not currently on the school committee, but my understanding is that that's what happened, happens and where you can give a goal to the superintendent and say, you know, we, our goal for the next, you know, I don't know how many, you know, the timeframe you want to give, is that there's a new website, or that, or that each school is providing, you know, information of this kind for a website. I'm not exactly sure how you would design it, um, but my understanding is you, you could make that a goal for the superintendent, and then, you know, he has to come back and report on progress towards that goal and then meet the goal.
And followed up and is evaluated?
It's followed up because it's one of the goals by which he would be evaluated.
And so therein, I think is one of the biggest problems this district has been having, at least since I've been on the school committee. So the first off, the way the process works, superintendent proposes his own goals that you then review as a committee, and this committee historically provides almost no pushback on his goals. This committee also shies away from putting numerical values on his goals that are easy to see where they're met. Remember, two years ago, he had one numerical goal, he was supposed to meet a number, he didn't quite meet it, which is fine, he came real close, and one of the school committee members, not here tonight, gave a ranking of exceeds expectation. And I pointed that out, and sure enough, the next year, there was no numerical goals, right? So one of the things I'd love to see out of a new committee is to actually have some, you know, really rigorous goals for the superintendent, um, to allow these ideas in the, in these committee goals to, you know, be placed on his shoulders, to have him delegate down to his staff, and to have, you know, some real accountability for the district. There are really, there are a lot of good ideas coming off this table, and we've been talking about them for a long time, you know, and I, I don't see, um, I don't see the movement that I think we could otherwise inspire.
Can I follow up? So, like, to be specific, so the early start time, that's an idea you have. That would go to a committee that would then come back, refer to a possible goal for the next year, is?
Yeah, so it would go to, um, probably at least two subcommittees, probably three. You'd have to, because there's a contract issue, so personnel's going to get involved, programs, programmatic issues, building and finance, or budgetary concerns. If through the three subcommittees vetting it, it went back to the full school committee with a positive recommendation, the school committee, um, if you're putting on a, on a goal situation, the school committee could just change policy and say, hey, school start and end times are here. But if, if you want to say, hey, Dr. Sapphire, we'd like to, over the next two years, gear the syst- gear the district up so that on year three, we can change this policy, we would vote as part of approving his goals, to have that be like, within the next year, these benchmarks will be hit, preparing the district for a shift in time.
Hi there.
So my knowledge, actually, I don't serve on, on the board currently either, and I've never served on a school committee. So I'm a bit, I don't have a whole lot of information about this, not beyond what Laura had said, um, but I do understand about the goals and how the superintendent should report, uh, in terms of implementing, uh, new projects. I think really being on the board and doing more training, which you're required to do once you, you do get voted on, uh, that, that kind of helps you through the process, but accountability is huge. I just, what Joel was saying, we really need to have a better process of holding people accountable for what.
So my fault, you, you're a researcher, and you, you are probably very well schooled in evidence-based practices?
Yes.
That's, so, um, as, how would you use your background in evidence-based practices to advocate for a goal that was being proposed or argue against?
Well, I would present them with data. I would present them with data. I would do lots of research and present them with data.
So having, you, you're, you would have the opportunity to have the school committee be more data-driven?
Uh, well, it's not just data-driven.
Is that something you would like to do?
In part, yes. I think all of us would have different strengths and weaknesses, and I think that it's important to, um, to let, you know, you know, Kathy's finance, she would need to input there. Sam and I are big on social emotional learning. So I think it's kind of bringing all of our strengths together, um, to really make those decisions. But again, evidence-based research is enormous and a lot of, you know, looking at other districts and seeing what they have done, and not just taking what has worked for them, but also researching what hasn't worked and improve on those things. So I think, you know, that's really.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jonathan?
So there's, there's two ways that we can actually implement things. One is by, if it's, if it's, it can set a goal. We set the goals for the superintendent. We also set, um, the, um, have to approve all of the, the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans. Now, they all tie together. They all should, they should be, they should be coordinated. They should be, we should be all rowing in the same direction. But to just, um, we also have to do the budget, and we control the budget. And, um, things that cost money, uh, we have to make, uh, decisions, um, on, you know, what we can afford and what we can't afford. And we never, um, as long as I've been on the school committee, um, we have never gotten what we asked for from the city. I mean, maybe it's because we ask for too much, but we are, our job is to, um, identify what we need and, and ask for it. That's our job, so we do that. And, uh, and we've never gotten, um, what we've asked for. Uh, we've always had to make, uh, some compromise and cuts. So you gotta, you gotta have a good idea, you gotta sell it to the rest of the committee, and then you've got to figure out how to pay for it.
Samantha?
So I think one sort of missing piece is that, um, we don't sort of, as a school committee, exist in a bubble, right? So there's the city council, and there's other city departments. And so, just to bring it back to sort of the composting idea, right? So the DPW provides maintenance in our schools. And so what I've, how I understand the issue is that to remove compost is sort of a contract issue, right? So it, it's something that has to be negotiated amongst other city departments. And so I think as a school committee, we could do a better job of reaching across the table to the city council and planning for some of these ideas to sort of get more, um, whole-city, um, backing. You know, I think it's, we have to work together and show sort of a unified front to make some of these bold ideas, or even just school building projects happen. And I will say the other sort of example that I was given, the new West Parish building, in thinking about maintaining new buildings, I was presented with this really interesting conundrum that all of the maintenance is really an IT issue, right? So it's mostly computers. And so the DPW doesn't necessarily have IT background. And so as we build new schools, we, we have to work with the other departments to make sure that people are trained in maintaining a whole different set of, um, programs that are computer-based. So.
Kathy? Oh, which side was it?
You don't want me again.
You get two, two swipes. So next question. School populations are declining, uh, demographically and with also housing trends on all of Cape Anne school systems. The conditions in the school buildings in our surrounding school systems are probably overall in better shape than Gloucesters. What do you think are the options for a regional approach to school capacity on Cape Anne? So I'm just not limiting this to Rockport, I'm talking Cape Anne. So you don't have to have a formal proposal, but I, I understand, Joel, you've been, um, advocating for this, so I'm going to start here. So by the time we get to you, you can, you can, you can back clean up, but, um, you know, I, I think that this is an interesting question right now. If populations are really going down, uh, what does that mean for us in terms of regional You can pass and come back.
Pass, please. Thank you.
Okay. Um, the, the total population of the Rockport school system, the Gloucester school system, is less than it was just in the Gloucester school system 20 years ago. Okay? So as far as, and there's no real indication that that is going to change, that, that, that decline is going to turn around. I mean, the, the, it's just affordable housing is not, um, is just not there. So I mean, there's, and, uh, the property values in both Gloucester and Rockport are very high and very hard for a young family to, uh, get property. So that being said, we have, we sent a letter to Rockport, um, the school committee voted to send a letter to Rockport to, to open discussions about, um, we said regionalization, they didn't like the word. But, um, how long ago? It was, it was over a year ago. It was over a year ago. They were about.
We've got plenty of time. Why don't we, let's go, we really do have plenty of time, so.
So we went time to this thing.
I know, I understand. So I'm, I'm asking you to adjust, and we'll go to 90 seconds. So you've got 30 seconds.
So anyways, so we have, we've been talking to Rockport. We've agreed to fund a study with the Donna Hugh Institute at UMass. And, and they are going to do a compare, they're going to do an analysis of what both districts have to offer, what the population trends will be. And we will receive that report next spring, so.
Samantha.
So similarly to Joel, I think regionalization with Rockport makes sense. And I would like to work hard in trying to support that moving forward. I will say, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but when my mom was on the school committee, it was proposed then, and there was a lot of resistance. And I think Jonathan's right. I think for some people, the diversity in our, in our schools in Gloucester is intimidating. And it's, it always sort of has been that way. So I think we have a lot of work to do in helping to improve our reputation here as we sort of move forward.
I just, we have been having those discussions about regionalization. It takes a long time for districts to come together and see what that looks like. I will say that part of the Mass School Building Authority process for our elementary schools is to project our elementary school population. They haven't projected middle and high. And over the next five to 10 years, I think it's only projected to go down about 60 students. So it's not like a whole school down. It's, right? So, so at least at the elementary level, it's fairly stable. That said, there could be economies with regionalization. I do think there's, you know, Rockport is really, that school is the hub. And they take great ownership, and it's part of their community. You know, we'll see where the conversations go and how we can maximize opportunities for our kids. But it's a long way off, probably.
At the sidewalk bazaar this year, I was meeting people, and I met someone who was on the Manchester, who was on the Essex School Board when they did the regionalization. And she said, it's the hardest thing I've ever done, and it took 10 years. You know, I, as, again, I know a lot of people who choice into Rockport. I think there's fantasy that there's some golden district just north of us where everything's great. I hear that. And I think part of my, you know, desire to communicate about what's really happening here is to change the reputation. I think probably, but I have had interesting experiences, because when you meet Rockport voters who are not parents, and they learn that a quarter of their school system comes from Gloucester, they're surprised. They're surprised at their tax, how their taxes are being utilized. I mean, there's all sorts of information that's not being shared. I think the word regionalization, while ultimately it may be the thing that makes the most sense, I think that sharing, you know, sharing programs, I think there's way, there are steps. And this study that's happening right now at UMass is going to look at what those steps could be, possibly sharing, you know, arts programs, possibly sharing other programs. There's also a great efficiency in the fact that if we regionalize, the state then begins to start paying for transportation costs.
So I'm a big fan of like the Band-Aid, like just kind of tear it off, right? It's like, I'm into regionalization and not looking to like training wheels the town of Rockport into coming. And although at the end of the day, this is about educating students and about providing children, you know, with the best opportunities possible. And I genuinely believe if you'll take the strengths of our district and the strengths of their district and not lose those in the shuffle while combining, you'll actually end up with a really robust regional district. There's, you know, the matter of money that I think will really kind of drive this. The city of Gloucester, you know, about to embark on a $70-plus million elementary school rebuild. And the, that leaves Beeman and Plum Cove out here, you know, projecting outward, West Parish to this, to the next one, you know, north of $80 million, right? We get reimbursed, but anyways, it's a ton of money. Be able to regionalize with Rockport and divvy up where the elementary school kids go throughout the island, you just save $80 million in, using the excess capacity in the buildings we have as an island, rather than building a new Beeman Plum Cove, right? Second thing about money is that if we succeed in that goal of educating the population about how good a district we really have these days, and we're able to really decimate those school choice numbers from Gloucester to Rockport, they won't be able to pass a budget. They're already heading toward overage as it is. But if we pulled that quarter, if a quarter of their population was gone, it would, you know, they would be pleading, hey, we need to regionalize because we can't keep our lights on in our school anymore because you're all gone, so.
I like the idea of diversifying the population. Data has shown, of course, data's my favorite, data shows that children just perform overall better. Average test scores go up, and tons of other benefits.
So could you repeat that and clarify that? Because I'm not sure that that's an assumption that 20% of the city understands or knows.
The test scores?
No, that, you're saying.
Diversifying a population?
Diversifying a population and integrating it across the school system.
Yes.
Raises test scores. I had a conversation, so I'll just, let me grab two minutes. I had a conversation with Dr. Sapphire four or five years ago about test scores. And we were talking about programming options. And I said, well, you know, the biggest single thing you could do would be to integrate and bus between veterans and East Gloucester. He said, I know, but you understand that we could never do that. So, because it's not about the test scores. Even within our city, it's about the different populations. So, but I think that this is a big issue. If people really care about quality education, then they need to understand that's that particular topic here.
I agree with you. It is very important. A lot of time, people have used the argument of neighborhood schools, you know, diversifying a population. If you look at the data, it's shown that students, you become more culturally diverse, which I know is something as a district that we're working on. Culturally diverse populations, you kind of, you end up getting a better understanding of the world around you, which I think in effect kind of affects higher-order thinking. So when you get, learn to see other perspectives, I think that's really the process of how children are learning. So it exposes them to more. In effect, you know, it's a trickle effect. They just, they learn better. So it is very important. And I would really encourage everyone to do more research on it if it's something that they're interested in. And if you really do believe that, you know, we deserve, children deserve to have a better opportunity at education, it's really important. Regionalization, it sounds good on paper, but you have to remember that you have to get everyone on board. And more of our students are going out than students are coming in. And sharing the tax burden with Rockport, I don't know that their citizens are going to want that. I would love for that. But again, we need to share that information with them. And getting that out there would be really important. So I think maybe when we update the website, we can start putting resources on there so that they, you know, links to, hey, learn about this over here, and learn about that over there. I think we, we're really not utilizing what we have at our disposal as good as we can, so. Thank you.
Can I clarify something?
Certainly.
That you, that you said. Our district, and I think my numbers refer back to what we considered free and reduced lunch versus now the state has a term of economically disadvantaged, and the way they calculate is different. But I, I think proportionally, it's down. It's similar. But in terms of low income, our district was like 44% across the district. And that number was 44% at East Gloucester. And veterans just happens to be very, very high over that. So this perception that East Gloucester is, is all families that are really doing well is not.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that, and I don't, I don't think that's what, no, I was just, it's a longer conversation. I don't want to, this is my opinion. So I don't want to intrude.
My only point is that all of our schools have a big mix.
The research point, so you take a city like Cambridge, which doesn't have a resource problem. They're building a, Cambridge buses up because they understand that's the single biggest thing they can do to increase test scores and quality of education. So you have choice, you have choice within the city of Cambridge, and people have, you know, they draw where they're going to go, and they have the first, second, third choice, that kind of thing. I know because some of my employees worked in Cambridge, and they were always wondering where their kids were going to go to school next year. All right, well, we're at a time when we're going to switch to audience questions. Hopefully, there will be questions. There could be follow-up questions to what you've heard people say so far.
Anyone who has a question, we need to use this mic. Anyone in the, do anyone have a question? I have a few. Actually, I came up with three. So it strikes me that this has been a wonderful conversation with a tremendous number of really important ideas. And yet, then when you got into how the school committee operates and committees and metrics and all of that, I'm sort of like. Do you feel that there is really enough open discussion of everyone about some of these kinds of big topics? Are teachers talking with parents, talking with you regularly in about the big topics of the day enough? And with the superintendent involved as well? But is this community being given the opportunity to hear presentations about evidence-based things? To look back at the multiple intelligences, to, you know, that, what is a trauma school? Are there enough opportunities within the school system as we see it that for this kind of not only awareness, but also engagement in some of these big choices that the community could make going forward?
No, there aren't enough opportunities. Like I said, I am the co-chair for CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And shocking to me to find out that some of the school committee members didn't know what CPAC was. It is buried somewhere, I believe, in chapter 71B. I think it's section three, but it is mandated by the state. And one of the things that CPAC does is create a bridge between families, the community, and the school district. And they are supposed to communicate. The district is supposed to help and help establish a CPAC. And CPAC would go to the district and tell them, hey, these are some of the concerns within the community. These are some of the education opportunities that we have, and we need to collaborate. And what can we do to achieve these goals? And Gloucester had a waiver for three years. I believe it was three years, possibly two years, but I couldn't find one. That's actually the reason why I'm running for school committee, is because I went to go find my CPAC, realized we didn't have one, and then I, when I went to go find out why. Okay, sorry.
What was the question again? It was communication.
There are a lot of great ideas going around, and.
Communication.
There are parents, there are teachers, the school committee, the superintendent. And yet, I hear described a fairly bureaucratic checkoff, you know, committees and all that. And I'd like to know if you think there's enough convening spaces for meetings about, where everyone can talk about the kinds of things that we've been talking about.
Well, I think there is not enough communication. I agree at that point. But there are a number of venues for communication, and they, and they don't happen. The, the CPAC thing is, is, is real. That's a real issue. But the other side of, every school has a site-based team. Every school has a PTO. Every, every, there are all these venues. But getting back to some of Laura's points is, is people are busy. And they, and it's hard to go to these things. It's hard to go to, and Sam mentioned it, you know, it's hard, you've got little kids. The people you want to hear from are busy. It's hard to get them in a room to talk about. So if we can, if we can expand the social media aspect, so people can sit in their living room and talk about it, it's good.
So sort of two points. I think school committee presence in the actual schools is really important. And I think there are some barriers to that. And I think it would be helpful to address some of those barriers to getting school committee members as involved as possible.
What are the barriers for those of us who don't understand?
So one of the things that I noticed in a meeting was that for a school committee member, and you guys can correct me if I've understood this wrong. For a school committee member to go into a school, we first have to get permission from the superintendent. So you ask the superintendent to say, hey, can I go into the school? And then the superintendent will say yay or nay. I'm assuming mostly it's a yay, but, you know, there's still that barrier if that exists. And I don't think that that's necessary. I think I should be able to directly email a principal and say, hey, can I come and check out this meeting that you guys are having? I want to learn more about what it is that you're doing.
Yeah, we can, we have time. Go ahead, go ahead, Kathy, go ahead.
The other piece of that is throughout this campaign, I've reached out to, I've had conversations with my child's pediatrician, right? And so, and he's local. And I think those are sort of the conversations that I would like school committee members to be having. Sort of, what do you see is happening in your practice and some of the mental health agencies? What do you see is happening with our kids and our families? What do you think we need to be doing in our schools differently to meet the needs that you see in, from a health perspective or from a mental health perspective? I think there just needs to be more community collaboration because there's a lot of good programs, and there's a lot of good people doing good work. Nobody's talking about.
So I'll just say, there are, there are presentations given to the school committee. The city health director came to us when recreational marijuana was happening. So there is some of those interactions with other city departments and other experts in the particular area. I will say that the district co-sponsors a education forum usually every couple of years with the Gloucester Education Foundation. The topics have ranged from technology and the power of technology, universal design for learning. And community is all invited to those discussions and share ideas and to, you know, brainstorm and kind of learn from that as well, so that people understand where education is heading. There's always room for more forums for parents. We've had curriculum nights. They're not well-attended, but my opinion is, if you've got six people that came and it was really good, they're going to tell everybody, and hopefully next time, they'll say, you know, we really should go because it was really worth my time. We just need to keep, keep trying and hopefully just keep building it that way. But reach the people that really will come and do it anyway, even if it's not a big turnout.
So I would say two things. You know, when I started thinking about running for school committee, I went to almost every school committee meeting last year. And the truth is, people don't come. At the beginning, there's, there's time for everyone to stand up and speak. And until the East Gloucester Veterans School Project started, almost no one ever came. So, you know, that is a place where people could come if they knew about it. And I think people don't know about it. But I, people could come, and the, you know, and the Schoolhouse Road folks utilize that time very well to their advantage. But I think, you know, I think we should be opening up the system as much as we can. When I speak to parents, they say, well, we're not going to want to come out on another night, but if you could do something on a night where we have to be at school already. If you could come, if the school committee could come an hour before parent-teacher meetings, or an hour before, you know, the play, or an hour before. It may be that that won't work, but I think we have to try. I think we have to try to go out into the community and create those opportunities.
So I think on a smaller scale, there's issues with communication, you know, within departments in the city, within city government. You know, this, due to the frequency with which we are in contested contract negotiations, there's a very poor relationship between the teachers and the school committee. There's a, I think a very poor relationship between the teachers and central administration. So right there, you have a communication breakdown that I think is a detriment to the district and a detriment to us making progress as a district, because everyone's looking at the other with a little suspicion. And when someone asks someone to do something or suggest an idea, is there an ulterior motive here? Is the thinking that I keep hearing from both sides? I also think that the school department, as I said before, we are one department in the city. We are like, you know, there's a DPW, there is a billing department, there's a school department, right? And we, because we're such a big department, and because we're the only one that has an elected board governing it, we sometimes get this attitude, like we're on this little island alone. we sometimes get this attitude, like we're on this little island alone. And there's lack of collaboration with the other departments, lack of collaboration with the city council. Even the relationship between the city council and the school committee is poor.
So I'd like to do a little bit of a follow-up on that. Just to follow up too on the inclusive kind of education. There was a presentation about education in Finland by an inclusion teacher from Baltimore, who did a Fulbright over there. And they have spent 20 years moving from tracked education into inclusion and really believe in that. But they also have a system where teachers have tremendous autonomy. There's no oversight over what the teacher is doing because they're such professionals. And as I understand it, teachers would like, in the contract negotiations, to have more authority within the schools to develop the programs. And so what are your, I assume you can answer this question if you're not directly in negotiations now, but what do you view as the role of teachers in the schools and as part of your education philosophy? And the level of autonomy and ability to influence the program in the schools that the teachers should have?
So that's a big one. Would anyone like to raise their hand?
The program in Finland is truly amazing. I have presented it before to other people, and they said, well, their population is a lot lower than ours. They don't have a lot of the issues that we have. I think--
I think Finland's bigger than Gloucester.
But on a large scale. But the schools, just the way the community operates, you know, they don't have the behavioral issues that we do. Or, you know, the demographic is different than ours. However, I guess my own experience going to school for education, you learn about all these fantastic things that you can do, and then you realize that you're limited when you get into the public school system. So a lot of teachers, you know, they go into the profession, you know, they go to school really hungry. I can't wait to teach these kids. I can't wait to work with them and use all these tools. And then you get into this box, and you're like, wait, I can't, I can't do what I want to do. I have to do what the school is doing. I mean, the MCAS prep, it shuts down the schools. Kids, the anxiety of, you know, doing these standardized tests, it's overwhelming. So I would love to see teachers have more autonomy. But again, I think part of the fear is that we won't be able to hold them accountable if we do that. So I think we need to get creative and work with them. I don't think that teachers are just trying to get, you know, free rein. I think they-- Okay.
So there's, as far as teacher autonomy goes, there's a couple of different ways to look at it. And in Gloucester, we have, I think, over 100 different teacher committees that do things as far as picking a curriculum. The teachers are involved in every aspect of developing curriculum. They're involved in all of these things. And it's driven by the teachers. When we research a new program for science for the middle school, it's not top-down. It is driven by the teachers. They put together committees, they look at different things, and they do that. So this, in one aspect, we have a great deal of teacher autonomy. And the Innovation Middle School has more autonomy than a normal school that's written into their program. That's what an innovation school is. But on the other side, we have the union. And the union, from my dealings with negotiations, and I'm feeling new to it because my wife was a teacher and she just retired last year, so I had--
Time, but you, I think we need to keep calling.
We had, so I really couldn't be involved-- I could not be involved in negotiations.
Because you had a conflict.
Because my wife was a teacher in the system. And so I've really just come back into this in the last year. And the teacher, the union's idea of autonomy is, I think, basically wanting to take over, to some extent, the administrative duties of the superintendent. And, but I think we do have teacher autonomy as far as all the decisions that get made. So you can look at it two different ways.
Any other opinions on this topic?
Well, I'm currently on the negotiating team. And we are negotiating this time in public, so people can come to see the proposals, going back and forth between the teachers and our discussions. I think from the state level, there's a really big push for quote-unquote autonomy. But in our district, the superintendent presented all the different initiatives we've done in the committees that have worked on them. One of the reasons our scores were not so good a while ago is that we didn't really have consistent curriculum. So if we needed to explain away why aren't we succeeding or why aren't our kids succeeding, we needed to take a step back and say, what are we using for our curriculum? Is everybody using the same? Because if it's not the same, how do you know where you're falling down? The teachers were wholly involved in the curriculum for literacy and the curriculum for math. And the middle school just picked a new math curriculum. So it's a really collaborative thing. I just, I think there's a, I don't really know, you know, there's accountability issues that the superintendent has, and to a degree, the teachers have it too. But there is collaboration, so I don't know what to say.
Anybody else?
I was just going to say, in addition to all this, I believe in a curriculum. I mean, I believe in a consistent curriculum where you have something, a base that you begin with, and then teachers can, you know, go out of it. But I do think there are, I think there's a benefit to having a consistent curriculum. And a lot of the educational researchers that I read believe that. So, you know, longtime teachers and those doing that. So I think that's an important piece of the puzzle.
For all interest, so I think the issue is, you know, the Gloucester school system could decide, you know what, that's right, we're going to take a Finland approach. And then we would still have state-mandated accountability that would slap us in the face. So for instance, the O'Malley Middle School is on a turnaround plan in part because eighth-grade science scores were really low. And I do not believe any eighth-grader at the O'Malley Middle School is wanting for a science education. What they're wanting for were the science education aligned with the curriculum that was being tested on an eighth-grade, eighth-grade MCAS. So I think, you know, even if we took this approach, once we went off in our own divergent, although students may be learning and maybe getting an education, may even be getting a better education, we'd have state-mandated turnaround plans saying, you need to get back on target. Here's where your targets are. And it would all, you know, that'd be it.
All right, I have one last one. And it does kind of relate to community engagement with the schools. So this has to do with the debt override for the new school. And I know you've had many more meetings over in the East Gloucester area. But I think, given, the high school will probably have to be moved to a new location at some point with climate change, given fire station, police station, given affordable housing needs. You know, if you had 40 million to put into affordable housing construction, things like that. Given how many people live on private roads where potholes, tree removal, no services are given now that were given a few years ago. There is a sense of some gap of understanding with the rest of the community. So one of the questions that keeps coming up is, have you thought about alternatives with some likelihood that the debt override vote goes down for what you will do? And art, and part of that then also would be, over some period of time, given the schools in Rockport that could accommodate some of our kids, how would you think about a reset on this question? Given something of a distance between the public that we certainly hear about and what your plans are for the new school?
So I think as far as whether or not the debt exclusion override succeeds or fails is going to rely hugely on messaging. So I think there's a solid message that if articulated properly, is one that will resonate. I know, you know, from a personal perspective, I'm 34 years old, I'm elder millennial. And so, you know, my generation is growing up being handed a whole lot of junk that we didn't, we didn't ask for, that we're going to have to pay for as a nation, right? So I think we kind of might have the right attitude, like, yeah, you know, what else? Add it to the list of things that we're going to have to come up and kind of, you know, correct because things were going to be put on the shelf for so long. I think the biggest thing is, we are in the situation we are in, where we're about to spend all this money on these new elementary schools at the same time as potentially addressing climate, sea level rise at the high school, at the same time of possibly addressing $100 million worth of sewer treatment plant upgrades in work, if not relocation, because that's below sea level also. All these things are because the can has been kicked down the road for the last 50 years. Every time something big has come up, I was going to finish this. Right, the city goes, well, this is quick and easy, or this is kind of long and hard. Let's do the quick and easy, and it gets kicked down the road. And that's where we are today. So if we just keep doing that, it's not going to get any better. We're going to just go deeper into the hole. And I'm ready to turn around and say, okay, we had some bad choices, let's take some good ones. I'm ready to contribute to get us back out of this hole.
Ms. Manners, Laura?
You know, Joel is referring to, I think, the sewer situation where there was going to be federal money to do that probably more than a decade ago now, that the city just--
Forty, fifty.
Forty, fifty years ago.
Yeah, seventies.
Sorry. In the seventies, that the city decided not to accept because of whatever the reason was. So now they're, now this is coming due. These are our children. And there are things falling from the roof of East Gloucester School. So there are tons and tons of needs in this community. There's no question about it. And without adequate or better-than-adequate schools to educate our children, then what? I mean, if we're looking to the future of this community, if we can't educate children here, what's the solution to that? Do we just not want to have children here?
Well, let's just let, let's let everybody have a chance to answer. So go ahead. Are you finished?
No, I was just going to say, as a parent in this community, the signal-- You know, we all, we understand the needs. I think, I think people who live here, parents live here, understand the needs. And it's a very telling situation that there's such a battle against this school. What, you know, what do we want to say about the future of this community if we don't want to provide safe schools for our children?
Okay. Kathy?
So I'll follow on. I mean, this is very emotional for me because I look at our schools, and five schools were built in a very short amount of time by a previous generation. And how many kids have gone through those schools? Why can't we do that for the children that are coming up? Why can't we, why don't we want that for the kids that we have? This isn't a luxury, it's a necessity. And if we can't, as a community, get behind funding buildings that are safe and provide what they're supposed to do, you know, as Joel said, we need to have good messaging out there because I know a lot of people are financially strapped. But what is the alternative? There is really no alternative. It's going to cost more if we kick it down the road. So why not do it now? And, you know, with the state help, they may not always have that much help for us to, you know, get 40%, almost 40% reimbursement and participate in a project. So our kids deserve everything good.
And I'll just add, we're talking about helping to enhance our school's reputation. I think if, as a community, we can't support the infrastructure that provides the education, I think we're just perpetuating the bad reputation that we have as, that already exists. I think strong schools equals a strong community. And if we can't support providing the best education possible for our kids, then in my opinion, we have a lot of work to do as a community.
The, as Kathy said, in, between 1948 and 1966, Gloucester built five new elementary schools and bought another one, which it wasn't, it bought Fuller St. Peters. And then a few years later, they built a new middle school. But that was, you know, in 16, 18 years, they built all those schools. We have an infrastructure issue, a real problem. It's not, we understand, our job is for the schools. It doesn't mean we don't know that the city has other needs, but it's not our job to try to figure them out. It's our job to articulate what the needs of the schools are. And that's, that's actually the law. It's what we're supposed to do. And the alternative, as Joel said, is, you know, we kick, if we kick the can down the road, if the override doesn't pass, it will essentially mean that we're going to start, continue to put Band-Aids on all of these old buildings that are not fuel-efficient, that are not safe, you know? They don't meet any kind of, a lot of them aren't handicapped accessible. And we're, the children are the ones that are going to pay for that, you know? Because the adults don't want to pay for it. But we did do, we did do some numbers on what it would actually mean as far as cost to the residents. And if our share of the new school, it comes in around $45 million, which is what we project with the reimbursement, it would add 38 cents to the tax base. So that's 38 cents on $1,000 of valuation. So if your house is worth $100,000, that's $38. If it's, if it's worth, if it's worth $500,000, it's still under $200 a year.
So my follow-up, one last follow-up question, and then we got to go to the final statement. So you, either, sorry, you have a chance to speak.
Can I?
Yeah. You may.
I'll be quick. They all made excellent points. Ultimately, it is up to the taxpayers. I've spoken to the MSBA a few times, and they've told me that this, even though they are offering all of this money and assistance with the project, there have been a couple of districts that have not participated. I think it's a half of the ones that didn't actually went back and presented it again because they realized that they really needed these schools. Our schools are broken, and we need to fix them. And again, we can keep putting Band-Aids on them. But ultimately, it really is up to the taxpayers to make that decision. Just know that maintenance of these buildings will cost us more in the long run. You know, after the 20 years, it's gone. And then, you know, we'll have these new buildings that are efficient. And just in utilities alone, it's going to be a significant savings. It'd be nice to be able to see what the savings are going to be like. I know that they can do that study eventually when all the details are laid out. So we can actually see, you know, well, we're going to be spending more money here, but we'll be saving money here. So I think we need to look at that a little bit more. And I think we need to address the anger that the citizens have, especially seeing how Fuller went down. We really need to promise the community and our kids that we're going to take care of these schools. And I know it's built in, the maintenance plan is built in, but we really need to take care of these schools. I mean, we can get loaded on all of the things that we can't change, but ultimately, this is where we're at now. And we either leave it, and you don't vote because you're angry or because you can't afford it, whatever the reasons are, but just know that these problems--
We're going to have to, so we're going to have a one-minute closing statement.
You had a gentleman in the audience, I think, that wanted to ask something.
Yes?
Yes.
Good evening. I appreciate all your different points of view. And I think the thing that's coming through to me is that you're not getting your message out to the community. And by simply putting something on a website, it's not proactive. It's a neutral entity. So you need to be, all your kind of goals aren't being communicated outward. You need to push your message out. So whatever you do, maybe you form a subcommittee or something like that to sort of get your messaging out to the community. Because going to a website involves somebody sort of wanting to get there. You need to sort of get to the parents and the constituents that sort of say, this is important to me, and communicate your issues. So I think that-- issues. So, I think that you're kind of not up to date in terms of what people are thinking about, in terms of how they get messaging. And, you know, for people that are busy, and parents especially, you need to sort of push that messaging outward. And all your goals are great, and I don't see a lot of differentiation between you all. So, if you can communicate as a committee that these are important messages that need to get out to the people, then you need to sort of get that out.
I agree with that. And I have one, I have one basic question before we go to the one-minute concluding statement. Who structurally, who structurally on the school committee, and who structurally on the administration is responsible for the branding and coordination of messaging citywide?
Citywide?
No, for the school system. So, in other words, how do you do what he, who is going to be, whose job is it to create the messages and make sure they happen in a coordinated fashion within the system? At the administration level, and is there anybody on the school system that has that?
Superintendent.
I mean, on the school committee?
The superintendent.
So, the superintendent is in charge of messaging?
Yeah.
But he's not, I mean, that's not his training. He's not, I mean, he may be responsible, but there's no, as far as I understand, and I've been asking this question for a year, there's no communications professional involved in our school system who is taking a systematic approach to what you're talking about, to pushing out. This is my-
Yeah, that's, that's a follow-up question.
Therein lies the issue. I asked for, you know, we can invest in PR, you know, that's a smart investment, you know, especially with the money that goes out the door through school choice, just for general population school choice, let alone special needs school choice that goes out the door. And, you know, we hired The Bridge. And nothing against The Bridge, but they produce some video content. This is a $40 million organization here. You know, let's look at how a $40 million organization gets the word out typically. And it's more than just a few pieces of video content. And I appreciate there's a budgetary hit to this, but again, this is long-term stuff, right? And the investment you make now has the return in the long run that makes it worth the investment you're making now. And, you know, it hasn't come across that way. And so, again, it's one of those things I'm hopeful that as the school committee evolves, we may begin to, you know, actually look at the marketing side of this, the branding side of this.
Thank you very much. So, we're now to the time when you have a one minute each for a concluding statement. And just sort of summing up your position and why you think the voters should choose you.
Might we start with Sam?
Sure.
Sure.
Sure, no problem. So, again, my name is Samantha Verga Watson. Before I forget, I'm seventh on the ballot, which I'm told matters. So, please, don't just forget about me at the bottom of the list. I, you know, as a social worker, it's something, my background is something that's never really been on the school committee. And with the high-needs population being over 50%, it's time that somebody with a mental health background is represented on the school committee. In addition to that, I've actually worked with the youth in the city, and I understand the needs on sort of a much more intimate level. And I'm a parent of kids who aren't even in the system, so I'm invested. And I organically have conversations with young parents about what's going on with the, what's going on in the schools. And I think that that matters. Thank you.
Kathy Clancy, I have a child in the school district. I've been invested in the school district for a very long time. I spend a lot of my discretionary time with the Gloucester Education Foundation. So, if I'm not doing it from a budget constraint perspective, I do it from, hopefully, connecting community generosity to our schools, which adds so much to our district. I think my finance background, you know, helps me be very prudent in terms of weighing trade-offs and priorities. And I think that's the slant that I bring to the committee. There's a lot of work to be done that requires kind of fiscal prudency, but also forward-thinking and planning. So, hopefully, you'll choose to vote, give me one of your votes as well. Thank you.
I'm Laura Wiesson. I believe that my role as a parent who's invested in this system, and I'm about to have two children in the system, makes me, gives me an insight into what's happening at the elementary level, just organically. I'm also, I don't know if this is true, but I have, you know, I have over 20 years of communications experience. And I think as we've seen tonight, communications is a major issue in this system. So, I've worked both in television, I was also the communications officer for an international nonprofit. So, that's what I do. I communicate, both informally with other parent friends and as a profession. And I believe that we have many, many successes here that we can talk about. And I think also, if we can explain our challenges and bring people in, we'll have, you know, we'll have much better footing to move into the future and to improve and strengthen this system. So, my name is Laura Wiesson. I'm number six on the ballot, and thank you for your vote.
Thanks again for coming out. My name is Joel Favazza. I think, you know, my unique qualification is that I kind of sit in the middle of the spectrum here. I, like some of my colleagues up here, have children entering the district. But I also have been on this committee for the end of my second term, so I have some experience, you know, deep inside what's working and what's not working. So, that kind of uniquely positions me among the candidates that are up here tonight. My background as a real estate attorney, I specialize in part in permitting real estate development. Obviously, we talk about facility changes that are happening throughout the district, and making sure that the messaging behind those is successful to get buy-in from the people making the decisions. I think my skill set and my personal work enables me to do that. I also serve on the capital improvement advisory board, so I review citywide capital expenditures that are coming down. That gives me insight into the world of the city of Gloucester outside of the school district itself. Last thing I mentioned is, I mentioned I'm married to a school teacher. I think that gives me a little insight into the world of a teacher, and that's very helpful. I see you coming at me, so I'm all done. Joel Favazza, thank you very much.
My name is Ida Shaker, and before I forget, I'm number four on the ballot. I am a parent in the district. I want to help children. That's my life's purpose. I genuinely believe that, and I will continue to do so whether or not I am elected. But I would love to maximize that potential and do so from, you know, governing, with this governing board. I will continue to advocate for children, and thank you.
I'm very encouraged by the people that are running for school committee this time around. There's been a number of elections that I've been involved in where little and nobody ran, other than the incumbents. And I'm really thrilled to see all of these people coming out. I see this as the new generation, and I hope to stay on for one more term and help with some of the historical knowledge that I have, as well as to sort of, it is, it's great to have all these great ideals, but you've got to get things done. And there's more to it than just wanting to do things. It's, you've got to get things done, you've got to get people on board, you've got to make it happen. And I have a pretty good track record of getting things done. And my name's Jonathan Pope, and I'm pretty sure I'm on the ballot somewhere.
So, I'd like to just conclude by thanking the candidates. I'm very encouraged as well, Jonathan, by the quality that we have in front of us, a lot of great choices. And your sense of purpose and dedication to the children is very inspiring. I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's really nice to have people who care about the election and the schools and the city council. So, thank you very much, and let's move ahead.
Thank you.